Welcome one and all to the City of West Miami Regular Commission Meeting of January 16th. It is 7:30 PM and the meeting is called to order. Chief? For the invocation, please.
Let us pray. God in heaven, we ask you to rain down your unifying grace upon our country and our community. We are in need of your unending compassion and your heavenly mercy now more than ever. Our nation is undergoing countless challenges and divisiveness which undoubtedly require divine intervention. Just as you sent your archangel Michael to battle the forces of evil, so we too send out our brave men and women to make our city safe and protect those who call for help from their local police. Thus far, in 2019, our nation has lost seven police officers to violence. We especially implore your divine help, strength, compassion, and love for the families whose lives have been thrust into pain and disarray by the tragic deaths of the recently killed police officers. Over the past few weeks, besides the seven who have died, dozens of others have been seriously injured and we pray for their speedy recovery. We beseech you that you give us, give strength and courage to the family members of those police officers who have been so viciously injured and killed, that you give strength and healing to those police officers who are still recovering from both their physical and psychological injuries, and that you keep safe the countless thousands of police officers who diligently and bravely strive to keep the peace and protect us all. In Christ's sermon on the mount, he gave us eight beatitudes, his words recorded for all prosperity in the gospel of Matthew. One of his beatitudes was, blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God. Our local police officers are our peacemakers. Please keep them safe as well as our firefighters and our military men and women. Return them all home safely to their families at the end of their respective tours of duty. Bless and protect us all, heavenly father, and bestow upon us your love, mercy, compassion, and grace. Help us and guide our elected officials in making the best and correct decisions always. Help those in our community who are lonely, suffering, or ill. Pour out your love, mercy, and healing on those most in need. And to this prayer, we all say amen.
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 Thank you, sir. Would you also lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mujin is excused this evening. Vice Mayor Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor is presiding. Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
And for the record, acting city manager Juan Pena is present. City attorney Jose Villalobos is excused this evening, and city clerk Garnetti Gonzalez is present.
Next item?
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for December 5, 2018, regular commission meeting.
Motion.
I need a second.
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 Are all in favor?
Call the vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam clerk, are we going to follow the agenda as is, correct?
It's up to your discretion if you want to follow.
We do have two attorneys in the audience that have cases before you if you want to take those out of order first.
As you wish, sir.
So those will be items 11E, F, and G, and H. Would you like me to proceed?
I'm sorry, may I ask a question? Mr. Manager, in the absence of our attorney this evening, are we able to proceed with these?
Yes, there's still court enforcement cases that really don't need anything from Mr. Villalobos.
Okay, proceed.
Item 11E, this is a request for mitigation of court enforcement liens for court violations at 6340 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida, and owner Roma Holdings, number 2 LLC. Item 11F, this is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager, the acting city manager, to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of blank from Roma Holdings, number 2 LLC, on court enforcement lien for court violations at the property located at 6340 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid by blank, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Go ahead, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Julio Gutierrez, 2464 Southwest 137th Avenue, Miami, Florida, 33175. I am an attorney who is employed with Roma Holdings, number 2.
Okay. This is the, Roma Holdings is the name for the property where...
Ray's Pizza.
Ray, Ray's Pizza's at.
Right.
And they were cited by the city for an illegal construction that was done on a fence and a cooler on the property. They subsequently have gone ahead and made corrections to the property, and there is a lien in the amount of $12,000...
$998.
Eight dollars and 25 cents.
I would like to point out that the thing with the cooler was there years, over 20 years ago when we brought the property. The fence, as soon as you guys asked us to, we fixed the fence right away. Getting the permits and getting the people to be able to fix it because during the situation, I think you guys are aware, we also had to basically gut the whole place because it rained one day so much that it destroyed our whole, our whole pizzeria. And we basically had to rebuild it from scratch. That cost us over $100,000. And that took a little bit longer than we expected with the permitting process and getting all the approvals. We have the person who was doing the permits and processing on the cooler here today, and he can explain to you all the things that happened during it. But we're asking for a mitigation because not only have we done what we, what you guys have asked us to do, we did it as fast as we could, but we're also now in a situation where there's this huge high-rise going up next to us. The dust has been clogging our, what do you call the...
Trains?
No, it's been clogging the kitchen, the air, the air that falls into the kitchen with the hood.
Exactly.
And we've had lots of problems with them. I'm trying to work it out with them. But we haven't called you or said anything about it. We're trying to work it out together. What I'm saying is we're losing money, and we're trying to figure out ways to keep open as much as we can. I'd like to be able to see if we can mitigate the amount substantially because I think that we've tried to do everything. We're still losing money there because of the construction that's ongoing, which I understand they're allowed to do it because it's their property. But it is affecting us, and the bottom line is that it's, it's getting difficult. So we're asking for a mitigation to make it at least just 10% of what we owe.
Mr. Pena, how long was the file open? How long were we working on this?
Roughly a year. The 10% will cover the expenses associated with the, with the property.
Well, you know, I always like to stay away from percentage, percentages. I want to always take it on an individual case basis.
They've been very cooperative since we cited them, so I don't have a problem. That would be $1,299.82.
So the property owner responded to our notices and complied quickly?
Yes, as quickly as can be with all the other work that had to be done.
Okay.
And your inspector, Mr. Garcia, was really good at helping us get through the process because we're not, we're not in the process of doing all these things all the time. He was really, really good.
Thank you for letting us know that.
I have a question. I know the pizza, Ray's Pizza is right there.
Yes, sir.
And I being in there, just walking the sidewalk and come in. Do you have parking space in the back?
Yes, sir. Yes. We had to redo that a long time ago, and we had to put, I think the inspectors also asked us to put lights. We did the lights. We had to have a lighting study because it has to have certain lumens. I'm not exactly sure of how that works. I just come here and represent that, but we did everything that they asked us to do. I think that was, that was a long time ago.
Correct.
My question is because I used to be there, the CBS, and I always thought that the, about that, I said, well, these people, the, people walking in the front, it's easy to come in, come in. But I always was thinking if the parking in the back was all CBS or part of yours.
No, no, no. We...
They have their own parking lot. They have their own parking lot.
Their own entrance?
Yes.
Yes, our own entrance, 14 spots on the, in the back, and I think there's two in the front.
No, I'm happy to know that because I always thought about it and never asked.
Yeah, the thing is, it's a property that's pretty small, and we would have been involved with the situation that the apartments that are building next door, except for the fact that the guy behind us didn't want to sell. So we were, we had a choice.
I hope you will have more business now after the building is finished.
No, no, after that thing's over, I think we're going to have a lot of business.
I hope so.
But right now, the dust, the dust is killing us, and we have to have some, they're constantly cleaning every couple of hours because the dust, every time they open the door...
And the frozen was, by the freezer, was in the, in the west side of the building or the back?
It was in the back.
East side.
In the back?
Yeah, on the east side, in the back.
Yeah.
Motion for 10%.
Second.
Well, let's, let's, they're waiting for percentage, let's get an amount. What's the amount, Mr. Pena?
$1,299.82.
And that dust covered our time and effort, so...
I second.
So be it.
Now, we have to put a time on that, 30 days?
30 days is fine. We'll have to check here as soon as we can. I, I'm going to leave to New York tonight, so I won't be back till next Wednesday, but we'll have to check within 15 days.
Downstairs, City Hall.
Madam clerk, could you read the resolution, please?
I read the resolution already for the record. What we need is to, to hear votes.
We have a motion.
Yes.
Second, I second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blanes, second by Commissioner Suarez, and on the motion, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
For zero, item passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good night.
Thank you.
I wish you the best with the new building and new customers there. A lot of people calling you. I hope, I hope.
Good night.
Good night.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Ta luego, good night.
Next item now.
Next item is item 11G, request for mitigation of court enforcement liens for court violations at 6200 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, and owner Hinesco Partners. Item H, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of blank from Hinesco Partners on court enforcement lien for court violations at the property located at 6200 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, providing that if payment in full is not paid by blank, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Ms. Mayor, the, the property was one of the strip centers at 6200 Southwest 8th Street, which is occupied by a flower shop. The violation was not, non-renewal of their occupational license. They eventually did renew both occupational license years that they needed. However, during that time, the fine kept growing to the amount that you have now. We make a recommendation of a mitigation of $1,236,060.
And the problem was the occupation?
Occupational license, not renewal of the occupational license.
Motion.
What, hold on, we have, go ahead, sir.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
Madam Vice Mayor, Commissioners Victor De Yure, 6780 Coral Way, Miami, Florida, 33155. A longtime taxpayer of yours, Dr. Allegra, which owns a strip shopping center down here on the corner, had a client, a tenant that would not renew its occupational license. Eventually, in October of last year, a notice of claim of lien, and a notice and claim of lien of code enforcement was recorded. But back in August, first, they had obtained the license, so like three months before that cured the problem. And so obviously, the doctor is not the one that's at fault, it's the tenant, but here we are. And this year, in fact, when it came up for renewal, the doctor asked me personally to go renew it for the tenant so we wouldn't run into that problem again. And as it turned out, the tenant had gone minutes before, paid for it. I came minutes later, paid for it, so I got paid twice, then I had to get reimbursed from the city, which it turned out fine. But basically, it's a non-safety issue. It's a matter of a license, and certainly, you know, we're willing to, the client is willing to pay what would, what you're out, the cost you're out in, and that'll be fine with us.
Second, I second his motion.
That's the reason for the recommendation of the...
On the city manager's recommendation.
Yes.
$1,236.60.
Very well.
Thirty days?
Thirty days.
Hold the vote, please, 30 days?
I live right down the street, so I'll probably bring a check pretty soon.
All right, good.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
For zero, item passes.
Do I get an order from you so I can present?
They will, they will sign you the order.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, sir.
Go and watch the U M winning with Manny Diaz coaching now.
Madam clerk, I know we have some...
Presentations, yes.
Presentations, so if you will, I'd like to take those next.
Sure, I think we can proceed with the presentations. We can go to the front part.
To the front part?
Yes, of course.
The front of the 11B?
Yes, 11, you're going to start with 11B, Mr. Pena?
Yes.
Okay, 11B is a presentation of recognition to Sonia Delgado on her two decades of service to the City of West Miami by mayor and city commission.
Mr. Pena, you have, say a few words?
The last minute.
Thank you, sir.
Yolanda was 38 years.
She's a youngster.
Juan was 40 years.
She's a younger.
20 years.
So what we have here, representative of Sonia Delgado, two decades of service and loyal work, representative of Sonia Delgado, finance and administration of the City of West Miami, in recognition of your two decades of loyal, dedicated service and commitment to the City of West Miami and its citizens, with all of our gratitude, in the 16th day of January 2019, Edwarde Munez, Mayor, Ronda Rodriguez, Vice Mayor, Juan Bonas, Commissioner, and the Seattle Commissioner, and the Seattle Commissioner, very well.
When Sonia came to the city, there were...
Mr. Pena, if you say a few words?
Please remain in the, remain, remain in the front. Item, item.
Can we say a few words?
Antonia? No, she works for you.
We all work for her.
I'm a temporary stat.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city commission, acting city manager Juan Pena, and Anari Gonzalez, city clerk, and especially to Sonia and her family. My name is Yolanda Aguilar. I live at 6404 Southwest 12th Street, and I'm here to talk to you a little bit about Sonia. I wish we could clone Sonia, and we need more employees that have the level of dedication, the level of commitment, and the level of camaraderie that she displays in a professional manner. So the city is well represented, you are well represented always by Sonia. She's part of an exquisite team, and I think we can't say this enough, we have a very special crew, and yes, it's part of a big family. So I felt that it was important that we note for the record that Sonia has spent a good deal of her life. I met her when her daughters were babies, and she has been an outstanding, and I want to say exemplary employee, never calls out sick, always here on time, never complains no matter what situation she's dealing with. So it's really a pleasure to have worked with you for such a long time. I look forward to the future, and you're really a special, dedicated employee, and I know that you're very shy and is probably wanting me to stop, but I wanted the record to reflect that we really cherish and honor you tonight, along with the members of the city, the mayor and city commissioners. So thank you for your service.
Ditto.
And I actually have something to say. There's not one time whether she answers the phone or I walk in there that Sonia has a smile, she always has a smile on her face, always happy, even when she answers the phone, I can hear it in her voice. So, so thank you for, for, for making us proud, for always putting the city first. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have something for Sonia's family.
Next item is a presentation of recognition to Jose Luis Romano on his 25 years of service to the City of West Miami by mayor and city commission, the great Chao.
He solves a lot of problems.
Be a Superman.
Always. Always available.
This flag is presented to you by the City of West Miami, presented to Jose Luis Romano here, City of West Miami, Mayor Corser, three. Actually, you should say one. One. In recognition of your 25 years of loyal, dedicated service and commitment to the City of West Miami and its citizens, with all our gratitude, today, this 16th day of January 2019, Edwarde Munez, Mayor, Ronda Rodriguez, Vice Mayor, Anari Gonzalez, Commissioner, and the Seattle Commissioner, Juan Bonas, Commissioner.
As you know, most of you have had the services of Jose Romano at one time or another, always willing to go the extra mile, no matter what task we put in front, he's always tackling it, and he's always wants to learn more and more and more. Again, if, like Yolanda said, if we cloned Chao, I would clone him to have several Chals around.
I would like to add something. You know, it said that the City of West Miami is a very special place to live, and the reason it's a very special place to live is because of people like Sonia and Chao. They are the ones that make this city a great place to live. They are, they are the lifeblood of this city. They are what, what makes this city what it is, and it constitutes the great quality of life that we all enjoy. So as a resident, Sonia, thank you. Chao, thank you. Bottom of my heart, thank you.
Well, as you can see from the amount of tenure and their stay, they're here because they actually dedicate their lives to the city.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both for all.
Thank you.
Madam clerk?
Yes, item 11A is a presentation of recognition to the sponsors of the Lighting of the Tree 2018 event by mayor and city commission. And the, and the sponsors to the event were City National Bank, Baptist Health, South Florida, Greater Miami Caters, Inc., Public Supermarkets, Baronda Parret, the State Companies, and TY Lin International. Thank you for making our event a, one to remember. We appreciate it. And we have here present representative for the state companies, and we have TY Lin International well represented too by Mr. Messi.
Thank you. So we have certificates.
Can I take?
Mr. Messi?
Oh, Mr. Messi.
So let's proceed with the state companies first and then with the TY Lin International. As we all know, these events would not be able to happen, it takes place without the wonderful support of you both and I and everyone who supports us and donates. So with that said, this is a certificate of appreciation awarded to the state companies. The mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami recognize your sponsorship to the Lighting of the Tree 2018 event, and here I extend our gratitude for your continued commitment and ongoing support to improve the quality of life in our community. Day of the 16th of January 2019, Edwarde Munez, Mayor, Ronda Rodriguez, Vice Mayor, Juan Bonas, Commissioner, Anari Gonzalez, Commissioner, and the Seattle Commissioner. Thank you for all your support.
If you can, can I give our regards to Robert?
Yes.
I will.
And, and Paul. Maybe you can make, come to one of the events, hopefully. There, we, I mean, if you guys would, the helpful responses, we could put on a pretty nice event, so you're welcome.
It's a nice event. Your award? I'm sure it's great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
You want the books?
Sure, yeah.
My chair, would you like to, to next year?
I think I'll take your seat.
Bye, good night, congratulations.
Thank you.
Again, it's an honor, TY Lin International, and this international is not for nothing, let me tell you, they are internationally known throughout the world. They build bridges in the east and the west, even in one of the south, correct? This is a certificate of appreciation awarded to TY Lin International, the mayor and the city commission of the City of West Miami recognizes sponsorship to the Lighting of the Tree 2018 event, and hereby extend our gratitude for your continued commitment and ongoing support to improve the quality of life in our community. Day of the 16th, day of January 2019, Edwarde Munez, Mayor, Ronda Rodriguez, Vice Mayor, Anari Gonzalez, Commissioner, and the Seattle Commissioner, Juan Bonas, Commissioner. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messi.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Messi, thank you very much.
You have a pastorito?
I have a pastorito.
Yeah, yeah, we have that.[1765.12]
Do you have a pastelito?
Yeah, yeah, we have that.
Where are we at? Do you want to take a break?
Madam?
Do you want to continue or you want to take a break for?
Let's take a, a little break.
A short break.
Short break, short break.
Yes.
We're taking a short break, yes. Please and thank you. That way you can hand out your pastelitos.
No, we took a break to wait for you.
Working late today?
Am I invited?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a number on the speed dial, the one I told you for Eric?
Of course. His favorite girl.
We have a number on speed dial that we.
I can get it faster here. I'll tell her you're here.
Those are her twin妹妹. Sonia tiene los twin también.
No, no, two. The two girls are her daughters.
But they have, they have twins also.
Okay.
Yoli, Yoli, ella tiene la, los twin también.
I'm sorry?
Sonia tiene los twin también.
She's got a twin sister.
Oh, so she's got three daughters.
Right.
Okay, okay.
And they're all in the medical field, uh, girls. They're all, this one is studying pharmacy, the other one is already, uh.
Nurse, Eileen. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's continue with the agenda, please.
So, this meeting is called back to order? And we recommend, uh, we follow the original order of the agenda with item five, report of the city manager.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes. I submitted a written report, but I'll read it into the record just for everyone's information. Um, I received an email last week from our new PDMG, which is our new project manager for Hurricane Irma, reimbursement for debris projects. Two of our projects are at a phase four of the CRC review and the others in a phase three of the CRC review. There's a, uh, again, going back to their terminology, I asked them what, how many phases are there and what is CRC? He finally, in the email that's attached to the memo, explains what the CRC and how many phases there are. There are four phases, so hopefully with two of these, we're at the final phase. He says that the only thing that could delay these would be, one, the government shutdown and two, the, if they need more information on any one particular item of, of, of our request. Uh, again, I expressed to him that, uh, the bureaucratic red tape is costing us interest money that we're not getting either from FEMA or from anywhere else and we're have to pay it out of taxpayer money. And they're under the, they were under the understanding that we want it right away. However, now we're in 30 days of government shutdown, so just add another 30 days to the next review. Along, uh, six, uh, as far as the street markers that, uh, we're replacing, we have finished Southwest 62nd Avenue and we had just started, uh, uh, creating the molds and pouring the, the concrete for the molds, the street markers for Southwest 16th Street on 57th Avenue, all the way from 57th to 67th, that is the next road we're, we're working on. In addition to that, I attached to the, uh, memorandum, the conceptual drawings from the company that, uh, we, I solicited for the, um, entrance signs that we wanted to spruce up. The pictures are in the back, they submitted them yesterday. Um, there's, uh, there's one design, uh, pole design that's a two pole with the sign in the middle and, uh, just the City of West Miami name and the logo on top. And then for, uh, areas that we have a restricted right of way, in other words, just smaller right of way, it's a single pole with the sign mounted on top. And, um, that's what, uh, the conceptual drawing that, uh, we requested of the company. And then on the back, the last one is one that we've been trying to get here at City Hall for a while to indicate to the general public when they get here, a directional sign for parking, uh, the public services building, the community center, and the commission chamber. So that they know which way to go once they get here. If you're all in consensus with the designs, then I'll ask them to price out what the cost of these signs will be and how many will, will require. As we last spoke, we were talking about Southwest 62nd Avenue for the signs that we were going to put with City of West Miami on, towards A Street and towards, uh, 20th Street. And then also on 16th Street, uh, at the entrance of the city, so that people understand when they enter the City of West Miami. So, I believe that's a total of maybe of, of the, of the single pole, that probably, from locations, probably three to four poles we'll need. And then of the, the, the other one, the wider one, uh, will replace, uh, that one will, will replace the other ones that we have and we'll probably need four to five of those.
What materials, uh, what materials are, uh?
The, the poles are aluminum and so is the sign, uh, material it's made out of.
And how about graphically, what colors, what?
Well, uh, graphically, we'll go with our, our, our city logo for the, with the colors that it already comes with. They'll match that. And then the, the City of West Miami, uh, name will be in the royal blue that we've always used.
And that's all aluminum also?
Yes.
Is that going to be like a black grill work?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the aluminum where the, where the seal of the city is and the name, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, it'll be like brushed aluminum?
Yes, most probably.
And then black, um, ironwork or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get a, a sample before we make them, put them into production.
Okay. And then I guess these are the same, right?
Those will be for the more restricted areas like on, here along Southwest A Street where we only have a sidewalk that we can mount that on.
And how many of these are we?
We want to put two, two here in the, in the area of, uh, A Street coming into the city. Uh, one on each side of the road and then on Southwest 16th Street, also on the sidewalks there, two.
And?
And one on, by the Publix on 57th.
And on anywhere else?
Not of that style, no.
What style do you have in mind to put in other places?
The, the other one that you have.
The big one?
Right.
Bigger one. Okay. How about 57th Avenue and A Street and that little area there that belongs to the Latin American restaurant?
Well, we, we would actually replace it with one of those, but we.
With one of these?
Yeah, we will enter into an agreement with him for an easement along that right of way, so, I mean, his property, so we, we end up doing the maintenance on that.
With the proper lighting and?
Correct.
And some nice landscaping. Yeah, I think this will look good there.
Where, there, we would use those single pole and we put it on the sidewalk so we don't have to interfere with the property there.
Mr. Bennett, you said lighting. This is, there's going to be ground lighting, ground lighting shining up?
They have the option of internal illumination, so, uh, we'll work those details out and see what, what they could, uh, offer us.
On both the pole, the single pole and the double pole?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, maybe the one on 57th and 8th, that one would definitely need to be illuminated.
I'd like them all to be illuminated that way at night when you see. I mean, I love the look. It's, it's, um, it's very rich, it's very, um, elegant. I think it fits with, with our, our city, the look of our city. Um, so I'm pleased with it. Any other comments or?
How about Silvania and, uh, 57th Avenue, the old signs that we have?
We will be replacing those.
With this? So, we'll be taking that, uh?
The monuments out.
Okay.
So, pretty much everywhere we have a sign, designation City of West Miami, it will be replaced with one of these.
Correct.
Okay.
I think are very elegant, very nice, and, uh, I like it.
Mr. Bennett, you're going to come back to us with the cost, is that where we're going now?
That's correct.
Once we give you our?
I got to give them quantities for them to give me costs.
Our approval, you'll come back to us. Okay, well, I like it. Um, Madam Clerk, if you need to, how do you want us to just, all in favor or just give our?
Yeah, just.
Just a blessing that, uh, you need to go ahead.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I got another question. The, the, uh, where are?
Our directional sign.
No, the, um, um, are we putting these anywhere else, like at maybe a Cooper or at the, uh, or the multi-purpose building, a direct?
The, the, it's a directional sign, it really has no purpose for that.
Where will this one go?
Right here at City Hall in front by the parking lot, as you come into the parking lot. In the, that hedge area that we have there, right in front of the hedge.
Across from where the marquee is?
Correct.
Very good.
Looks good.
Anything else?
Very nice.
Okay, you have our blessing, Mr. Bennett, to come back to us with, uh, the cost.
Prices, once we give them the quantities, they'll give us the prices.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, along, um, continuing with the report, along Southwest, uh, 66th Avenue and Southwest 12th Street in front of the Garden Club Park, as we have spoken before, we needed to provide some parking areas for the park now that it's, uh, more accessible and, um, being used more by the public. So, we, uh, designed, uh, modernistic, I guess, parking with, uh, some paver blocks and, uh, sod that we're going to put in eventually after they finish. But I provided you with some photos of the progress so far and they should be done at this site by, by Friday. And at that point, we will install the, the sod with our forces. Uh, basically, it's staggered stones and, uh, creates a, it allows for drainage and at the same time it creates, uh, a paved area for parking, uh, neater, much neater appearance to the area. Um, we are also, uh, once they're finished now on Friday, I am moving them to Cooper Park and we're going to do that along Southwest 15th Street first and then Southwest 16th Street at a later time.
That'll be the entire swale, because that's a pretty wide swale on, in Cooper.
On 16th Street, what we're going to do is we can't, we can't allow, anytime you provide improvement of parking, you cannot allow for cars to back out into the road. So, where the, where everybody's coming in and parking at an angle, they won't be able to do that anymore. Once these, this is done, they will have to park parallel.
Ah, okay. So, it won't be as wide as it is right now, that's what you're saying?
Correct. Well, if you picture Cooper Park, we have the alignment of all the Royal Palms. We're going to throw a, uh, 12-inch curb along the outside of the Palms to prevent that from happening into the, onto the sidewalk. And then from the curb out to the street will be the parking area.
Okay.
That's going to eliminate some, some, some parking spaces.
It reduces them, but, uh, at the same time, you're adding some on 15th Street where it's, it really doesn't exist now. So, it's really not, uh, eliminating too many.
But I have a question. In this case, the number of spaces you are going to add equal what is going to lose in the other side? Because we should not reduce this parking space, one?
We.
We need more space, space.
Correct.
Parking space in all, all these places where, where the residence comes and, and parking.
Understood. But you can't improve parking and create an, an unsafe condition. In other words, we couldn't just pave 16th Street, the parking area, and I'll keep allowing backing out into the Southwest 16th Street. That's not allowed.
Is that a law?
Yes.
So, basically, we were grandfathered in until we, until we improved upon it.
Until you improve it.
Makes sense.
So, so you can't really have nowadays, uh, create angle parking?
You can, but you have to do it like we did at City Hall. You have to have a lane behind it to be able to back into. That doesn't have traffic.
We don't have the space for that?
No.
You know, because we do have people that rent these, uh, that rent Cooper Park for birthday parties, so, you know, you.
Well, if you want, before we improve that, we could, uh, estimate now what their, the amount of parking and what we're going to provide and see how big is the difference.
Because then what we create is an issue with the, you know, uh, with the visitors parking on residences, uh, and on the residence driveways and right of ways, you know, that didn't park there before. Now, they're going to, you know, they're going to need to find a place to park to go to their birthday parties. So, we might be creating a, an issue with this improvement.
Again, we'll, we'll, we'll look at the condition now and how many will hold and then we'll look at the condition with the improvements and bring you back to see what the numbers are. Maybe the numbers are there.
How about, um, that street that became a one-way, uh, going south?
57th Court.
Right behind, uh, the Publix, isn't there a way to, to create some parking there?
We can.
Because, you know, I mean, how much traffic is there? Why, why are two lanes needed there? Maybe we can, you know, add parking, uh, on that.
It would be street-side parking.
Right.
But remember, the reason why it's a double lane is because the 18-wheelers that go into Publix.
I forgot about that.
Need the wide room to turn.
Right.
You can't restrict them. We could, I mean, we could create some parking on the, on the park side, but we have to see how many we're going to really gain, because we have there the driveways to the towers.
Right. Yeah, we really, I think we really need to think about this and not, not create, you know, an issue for, for the residents, you know, that live nearby. Um, because I noticed that on 16th Street, you know, the, the cars park, you know, angle parking there and they back out all the time. I mean, that's.
Correct, but that's, that's a, an, an existing condition that's not improved. The minute you improve it, you can't promote it.
You have to abide by the regulation.
Correct.
Okay.
And it definitely needs improving. It looks.
Yes.
A little raggedy, so it's. Uh, Mr. Bennett, so you'll do some numbers for us, check the existing parking and see what the new parking will be and let us know before you.
Correct. And also what we're, we're adding on 15th Street to see if that compensates for what we're losing on 16th.
We can always put signs up and say, uh, parking across the street.
Across the street, right.
For what? Oh, for the.
Where?
No, I don't think we'd do that. That's private property.
You might be able to get a couple of spots next to the handicap that's on the court.
Correct. That's why I said, let, let me see.
There's a grassy area there that might allow for a couple more spots.
In 15th Street, we're going to do a lot, the whole strip, so right now we're not using the whole strip, so let's see.
Quite a bit more.
Let's see what we're gaining.
We might gain versus lose. Okay, very good. So, we'll, we'll await your, your numbers, please.
Another thing, Mr. Bennett, um, is this grass, natural grass?
In the, in the crevices, yes.
Well, no, this is, this is highlight, but.
But, no, but.
He highlighted.
Right, no, no, but I mean, because that's going to require some maintenance.
Well, no, we're putting, uh, the, the sod that's designed for highways that's, uh, water tolerant.
How about that artificial one?
That's too expensive for us.
How about gravel?
That we don't allow gravel in the right of ways. We got to abide by the same rules.
It's got to be grass.
Yes.
Okay, so, so it's not totally, totally maintenance-free, we are going to have.
Well, eventually you have to, uh, cut the grass, of course.
Right.
But that's something that takes very little time on that.
Why don't they allow gravel?
Because the cars tend to kick it up when they're either leaving or arriving.
Hmm. It's always something. Okay.
As far as, um, the report goes, uh, also, as you can see down in City Hall, we're changing colors of City Hall inside out to match more of the colors that we have in the public services building, so we'll be doing that, uh, over the next couple of months. Our engineers are working on the two drainage extension projects that, uh, want the one for Southwest 13th Street and 65th.
Okay, very good. So we'll, we'll await your, your numbers, please.
Another thing, Mr. Bennett, is this grass, natural grass?
In the, in the crevices, yes.
Well, no, this is, this is highlight, but.
But, no, but.
He highlighted.
Right, no, no, but I mean, because that's going to require some maintenance.
Well, no, we're putting the sod that's designed for highways that's water-tolerant.
How about that artificial one?
That's too expensive for us.
How about gravel?
We don't allow gravel on the right-of-ways. We got to abide by the same rules.
It's got to be grass.
Yes.
Okay, so, so it's not totally, totally maintenance-free, we are going to have?
Well, eventually, you have to cut the grass, of course.
Right.
But that's something that takes very little time on that.
Why don't they allow gravel?
Because the cars tend to kick it up when they're either leaving or arriving.
Ah, it's always something, okay.
As far as the report goes, also, as you can see down in City Hall, we're changing colors of City Hall inside out to match more of the colors that we have in the Public Services Building, so we'll be doing that over the next couple of months. Our engineers are working on the two drainage extension projects that, the one for Southwest 13th Street and 65th, and the one for Southwest 57th Avenue and 12th Street. And the other item that they're working on is, as part of the consent decree, they've, Durham has requested water and sewer atlases on a GIS format to have the whole system from every utility mapped on their system and GIS locations on every valve, manhole, line that we have in the, in the ground. So that's all part of the agreement with the consent decree with the federal court for the operation of the sewer system. And that's the last item on the report.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, item six, Report of the City Attorney, non this evening. Item seven, Report of the City Engineers, non this evening. Item eight, Committee Reports, Report of the Mayor.
I don't have a report, Madam Clerk.
Any other committee?
Any other committee?
No.
No, ma'am, no reports.
Item nine, Citizens and Presentations, non this evening. Item 10, Under Unfinished Business. A, Follow-up Report by the Office of the Acting City Manager in reference to Status of FEMA Reimbursement Process, which was addressed at the Report of the City Manager.
And just to add to that, City National Bank notified us this week that the loan has been extended for another year from the time we submitted, which was last year in September. So we'll have until this year in September to pay the total amount due.
Next item would be item 11D. This is a presentation of recognition to Publix employees sponsored by Mayor Muhina. And this item was, at the request of Mayor Muhina, was deferred for February 6, 2019 at 7:00 PM, which will be a special meeting for presentations. Actually, and on that meeting also, the beauty queens from Barón de Paré will be presented with certificates.
Very good.
Next item will be then, item 11I, which is a request for proclamation declaring National School Choice Week 2019 by Mayor Muhina.
Madam Clerk, I don't know if we should defer this, or I can just, you or I can read into the record the letter. It's in our package, and we can probably proceed with it, or do you think we should defer it?
I would recommend this is an item, although it is an item by Mayor Muhina.
Let's?
The National School Choice Week takes place from January 20th to the 26th. And, and if we issue the proclamation, we send it to them, which we usually do, we've done it before, and so they can, I mean, it, this is an organization to raise awareness of the importance and opportunities of education, so.
I feel comfortable in proceeding with it, I think the mayor would?
May I?
Yes, of course.
May I? The customary, when a member of the table have an item, and he's not present, the item is deferred until that person is present. That's customary for years here.
Mm-hmm.
I recommend defer until he's here, because it's his item.
Very well then.
That's the customary thing here to do.
But it's due by next week.
Exactly. We have, we have, we don't have a meeting before that.
I received an email?
Right, and I'm saying the letter, the letter is here, so the clerk could read it into the record, and we could refer to it.
No, 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 no.
January 20th through 26th.
Next week is an, a special executive meeting. But there is another meeting in which they explain all this Barón de Paré and the Publix.
No, Commissioner, the next week is appropriations, legislative appropriations.
Next week is only for that?
Yes.
And the other meeting?
February 6th.
Will be the Barón de Paré and the Publix.
Right, but by then, the, the National School Week will have passed.
Right, right.
It's from the 20th to the 26th, so it's next week.
Correct. I appreciate your?
Next week is only?
No.
Well, read it.
It's right here.
Well, I have my phone.
No, 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 this is the letter from?
I'm going to tell you what, sent it to me by the carrier.
My mayor.
Commissioner, I appreciate your input, and with all due respect, Madam Clerk, could you read this letter in to the record, and we will proceed with this item, please? Right, that's what she's going to read now.
The request was sent by, to the Honorable Eduardo Muhina, by the Proclamations Department, School Choice Week, and it states, Dear Honorable Eduardo Muhina, we respectfully requesting that you consider joining dozens of city and county leaders across the county in officially recognizing January 20th through 26th, 2019, a school choice week in West Miami. National School Choice Week will feature an unprecedented 4,000, 40,000-plus events nationwide. National, National School Choice Week is entirely non-political and non-partisan, and we do not advocate for or against any legislation. Our goal is to simply, is simply to raise awareness among parents and of the public and non-public K to 12 education options available to their children. Last year, more than 720 mayors and county leaders, along with 32 governors, the unanimous United States Senate, and the president issued proclamations recognizing National School Choice Week. Please let me know if you will be able to issue the proclamation and help, help us raise awareness of the importance of opportunity in education. I greatly appreciate your consideration. We have provided both a Word and PDF proclamation on our website. Also, for your convenience, we provide a suggested proclamation language. Thank you in advance. Andrew Campanella, President, National School Choice Week.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Are we in agreement to for this proclamation? Any questions, any concerns?
Well, I just recommend to you that normally, here, when you have an issue, you are not here, it's deferred until you are in the table.
Correct, sir, but this isn't, this isn't an issue, this is just a proclamation?
If you want to take the issue like for you, you do it.
We are going to proceed with this item as read, so we will proceed with the proclamation, is that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So your recommendation is to proceed. Commissioner Blanis, are you in favor to proceed?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca? Mayor, Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Are in favor? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is item 11J. This is, was wrote by, sponsored by Commissioner Suarez, and it's a resolution with attachment of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami setting forth legislative priority requests and instructing the city lobbyist, Gomez Barkin and Associates, to advocate the Florida Legislature for sufficient statute state funds to upgrade and/or replace the city's 70-plus-year potable drinking water, piping distribution grid system throughout the city, providing for effective date, sponsored by Commissioner Suarez.
Now, it's the same thing. I think a mayor is calling a special City Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 23rd, right, next week?
Yes.
To discuss this, this matter, right?
That matter and other legislative appropriations.
So I think I, I, my proposal is defer this for next week, so we put together everything.
Yes.
Perfect.
Motion to defer?
Motion?
Second.
Are all in favor to defer until the 23rd?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item passes. No further items. Item 12, good of the order.
I got something. I have something. Another year, and, you know, it's a pleasure and an honor to sit here and serve the City of West Miami and its residents, along with, with you, my colleagues, and the administration, Mr. Panna, Anetti, our city clerk, our attorney that's not here, Mr. Viallo, our city manager over there in, in the waiting, come back in, Yolanda Aguilar, our police chief, and everyone, you know, that makes the City of West Miami a great place to live, you know, like Cheo and Sonia and all the others. I feel very lucky to have lived my life here in the City of West Miami. You know, I lived here most of my life, I've been living here now for 33 years. And, you know, my children were born here, and nothing but good things have happened to me here in this city. And now I see young families moving in. I would say that at least 45 to 65 young families have moved into the city, changing the demographics. And I see them, and I, and I think to myself, you know, that was me just a few years ago, when my children were little. You know, I used to go jogging with them in those little jogging carriages. Now I see others doing, I can't do it anymore, so. But now I see others doing it, and, and, you know, I reflect on that, and, you know, it's, it, it gives me a really, really, really good feeling, you know, about having lived here for so many years, and there's more to come, and there's more to come. So I just look forward to sitting here and keep doing what I do with, with my colleagues. So I feel very blessed, I feel very fortunate, so that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Commissioner is always very eloquent, and I have to say, I completely agree, I see the same thing, and, and those very same thoughts have crossed my mind, so, so thank you for putting it so nicely. Thank you. Completely in agreement with you, sir. Anybody else?
Thank you for, for saying those beautiful things, because at least you're doing something good. You're doing something better, not every day is better, it's good. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You know, I have to say something, because this just, this just, I thought about this. It's not everywhere, my colleagues, that, that people up in the dais get along and can laugh like we do, and yet disagree on items, but always be able to come back together and work together and laugh together. So we, we absolutely have something very special, and I, and I thank you for that, each and every one of you. I thank you for that.
Remember, for the better of West Miami.
Even the vice mayor doesn't bring any more of the chocolate chips from Costco, but we have pastelitos there, you know, so we are a happy group.
Okay, we want the chocolate chip.
Did I not bring you Cuban bread from Tampa, sir? Did I not bring you Cuban bread from La Segunda Central?
I will, I will bring it to you.
Did I not bring you some?
You did?
Okay, then.
But you're talking about bread, I'm talking about chocolate chips cookies.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night, good night.